All right, we are going to get started with our work session. I will turn it over to Dr. Ahar as we get an update on our anti-racism work in our district.
Thank you. Yeah, so the board may recall that last year, am I thinking of this right? Yeah, the summer of 20, we had, we were in the midst of, of the initial stages of putting together our return to learn plan and, and then doing some work with our community around that plan prior to finalizing it. Right in the midst of that, we, we were hit with the, the George Floyd murder and a tremendous increase in activism around the, you know, around racism and, and police violence, et cetera. And we, we had been working, as you all know, with the New York City Leadership Academy on our, our equity work. And we decided that, well, we have these, we have these town halls already established. We have the, the time committed. We can delay the, the discussions on return to learn, but the time to act right now on, on responding to this need is immediate. So we quickly reconvened with New York City Leadership Academy and created a, a, a process for engaging with, with our, our community, including our students. So we had two specific student anti-racist town halls is what we called them. And I believe it was seven other town halls, most of which were held virtually because of the COVID conditions. Really attempting to, to lift up the voices of our community, to, to engage with them directly as a school community, with a broader community, and then to learn where the, the specific pressure points are, are perceived to be by the community within the DMPS system. And then, and then get to work at dismantling those most pressing issues relative to racism and really adopt the stance that, that our goal is to become an anti-racist system. If, if you've attended any of our Culture and Climate Summits over the last several years, that's, you know, been a topic by, by some of our speakers. Certainly equity is a, is a huge driver of that, of that convening every year. And anti-racism has been something that's been addressed specifically. And to that end, Ibram X. Kendi, who is, is, is a scholar that we look to frequently and regularly in this work, who authored, I think most notably, a book entitled How to Be an Anti-Racist. He defines an anti-racist, he says, "An anti-racist idea is any idea that suggests the racial groups are equals in all their apparent differences, that there is nothing right or wrong with any particular racial group." And, and, and this is really the, the one that we really dove into last summer. Denial is the heartbeat of racism. So we came out that, that we are a racist system and our goal is to be an anti-racist system. So what, what do we need to do effectively to move our system through the lens of equity to become anti-racist so that we are providing the environment and the sense of belonging and the opportunities equitably for everyone? And that we're not inadvertently putting barriers in the way, whether those are emotional barriers or actual structural barriers toward accomplishment, opportunity, or outcomes. Being an anti-racist, according to Kendi, requires persistent self-awareness, constant self-criticism, and regular self-examination. So we, we, with the help of the New York City Leadership Academy, we took all of the information, all the feedback, all the conversation that, that we got through those town halls and formed some teams to help focus our efforts and organize our efforts within the district toward becoming anti-racist. So that's, that's kind of the, the starting point. We continue to pursue this work. One thing we've not done formally with the board is ask if this is the work that you want us to be doing. And I'm not saying that that's necessary tonight, but we've, we've, we've talked about briefly revisiting perhaps our, our student, treatment of student and treatment of staff reports in light of our SEL work. And I know boards are fluid things and we have this, this sitting board and, and this board has its priorities. Wondering too, and would just plant the idea that if, if the anti-racism work that we are currently engaged in is the right work, is it something that you want us to continue to pursue? And is it something that perhaps ought to be codified somewhere in governance policy? So I'm not suggesting that you all aren't a place to have that discussion this evening, but I wanted to sort of place that in your minds as we, as we talk about the work that we've been engaged in as a district team since early last summer. On the line with us, I can't see everybody who's signed on right now. My screen is too small, but we have Associate Superintendent Matt Smith and Executive Director Tim Schott and Director Peter LeBlanc, among others. And of course, our, our SEL team is, is still on the line as well. So I'll pass things over to Matt to get into a little bit more detail on what, what we've been doing, how we've organized the work, what's transpired, and, and next steps and progress thus far.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Good evening, Board. Thanks for the time. Yeah, as Tom mentioned, both Peter and Tim are on the call too, along with some of the other team members, just to help answer any questions that the board might have. We thought tonight, to give an update, we would offer up some correlating inputs that have taken place since 2020. And, and when I say correlating, they're correlating with the findings that were lifted up with our New York City Leadership Academy partners and facilitators of our anti-racist town halls with some of the associated actions that have taken place this year. So this is not obviously meant to be an exhaustive list of things. It's actually meant to be a conversation starter and to lift up opportunities that we can collectively engage in in terms of systemic practice and policy changes to move this work forward. As we all know, this is not work that is settled or, or is ignited in a moment in time. It's actually collective moments and it's about beliefs and mindsets and dispositions and associated actions and evidence of those actions that follow. So without further ado, I'll share my screen with you just to sort of walk you through a framework for how I thought this might actually help us to organize our, our thoughts around this conversation. And so I'll go ahead and get that done right now. And I'll, if, if you don't see my screen, I'm assuming that you're going to let me know. And so what you have there is, in front of you is just what, what Tom captured, right? Which was the, a year ago when we
Hey, Matt.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
Is it possible to increase that? It is really tiny.
Absolutely. Is that helpful?
It's a little, it's a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you.
That size working out for you? Perfect. I could also send this via email as well. But, so again, this is, what you should see is a report that you've had presented to you before, which will sort of captures the anti-racist town hall meetings that we began and engaged with our community and our stakeholders a year ago. So I'm just going to scroll down through this a little bit and lift up the four findings. And you've heard a lot about them tonight because again, the overall systemic, sustainable, strategic work is spearheaded through our SEL, right? And SEL is a lever for equity. But what you find is our findings in number one, two, three, and four. The first finding being that our assessments and our teaching and learning is being driven by whitewashed curriculum. And so there's some associated actions and inputs this year to directly attack this and, and to improve the learning experience, not only for our students, but for our staff and for our families. Finding number two is around recruitment, intention, and retention of staff, and staff that represents our students and our families. And so we want to continue to move and push and create systems and processes that generate a staff that is multiracial, multi-ethnic, multinational, that is truly representative of our students and the families that we serve in our community. Finding number three is about consistency across positions and so that we're creating a supportive and creative school experience for not just students, but for staff and families all alike. And of course, lastly, finding number four, that the current system is perpetuating systemic racism. So I'll just kind of scroll through here a little bit. I know that this topic is going to be sort of joined with this idea of guard railing our board goals and continuing to create policies and practices that protect and hold this work sacred as we move forward so that we can continue to be unencumbered and unhindered as much as possible and staying true to our values around becoming an anti-racist organization. So just to give you a frame of this particular setup, you'll recognize this, right? So, and again, this is provided to us a year ago, actually, actually around July 8th, as the results of our anti-racist town hall data sets were tabulated. And then what was presented to Des Moines Public Schools was areas of focus, which included a return to learn recommendations, which were some immediate recommendations from the New York City Leadership Academy, some long-term recommendations for these findings, as well as some potential resources. And to the far right in blue text, what you should see are some actions taken in FY21. And again, these actions are directly associated with that of the findings and the document that was provided to us from New York City Leadership Academy and our partners. Again, I won't jump through each of these individually. This is not an exhaustive list. We can certainly provide you with an exhaustive list, but this is just a sort of anchor of the conversation for tonight. When you look at finding number one, the current approach to teacher learning assessment is driven by adults using whitewashed curriculum. You can see some of the recommendations and obviously some of the resources from New York City Leadership Academy. What you'll see are some actions taken specifically in DMPS and FY21 around the implementation of a high-quality curriculum. You'll see EL and IM. IM is specifically noted just to your left there under Resources. And of course, our consistent partners in Unbound Ed and utilizing the resources and the videos and the trainings from Unbound Ed as a means to supplement and guide our curriculum revisions. In addition to our curriculum revisions, it's also important to note that student voice is heavy in our revisions and making sure that students are included in the redesign of our curriculum and our content so that it is not only standards-based, but it is also culturally relevant and inappropriate for our students and representative of their experiences. We've also got some embedded resources in professional learning, obviously from Unbound Ed, that is closely associated with our training with teachers and associate principals and principals. Again, you heard it tonight from our SEL presentation around the integrated professional learning for all. And this is something that we're paying close attention to and making sure that our spaces for planning include those multidisciplinary aspects so that we don't show up to schools, for example, or show up to department heads and supervisors and talk about anti-racism in an isolation or in a vacuum, but we actually blend and support and anchor the anti-racism in our SEL content and our standards-based curriculum in classrooms in IM and in EL. And so, as you might imagine, none of these curriculums actually come completely braided and embedded with each of those standards already packaged for you, right? So this is work that we do with our students, with our staff, and with our community and across multi-disciplines. And so that takes time and that takes space and it takes a ton of intentionality. I'm going to scroll through this a little bit. I'm going to try not to scroll too fast. If I scroll too fast and you get dizzy, just let me know. Again, so you, what you'll see again are some recommendations from New York City Leadership Academy and some, some resources. I'm just going to scroll till I get to some blue, talking about student offerings. And this year for FY21, we have built with students and with staff and with families, eight new courses to be offered in the high schools and FY22. These courses include, but are not limited to, Global Black Studies, African-American Studies, Indigenous Peoples and History of the U.S., Chicano Studies, Asian-American Civil Islander History, Latinx History, LGBTQ and History, and Intersectional Feminism. And so these are courses that we're excited to offer next year in each of our high schools. And we've still got a lot of work to do in these particular curriculum and course offerings, but it's absolutely in response to the student voice lifting up and our staff lifting up the opportunity for us to engage students in this learning. Scroll through just a little bit further here. We're on to finding number two. Again, these, just want to continue to point out, some of these inputs are not exhaustive. This is not an exhaustive list. These are just things to anchor this conversation specifically. So when we look at finding number two, and the current approach to recruitment, selection, and retention of staff produces a white, a majority-white staff. Some of the things that we've done is we actually have an anti-racist task force team that engages in continuous analysis and collaboration with our HR teams to examine our hiring and our onboarding processes. And so in addition to that, we've established affinity groups for our staff, most notably and first and foremost, was for our black staff to share space and to learn from the experience of, of our black staff across the organization and, and not just our instructional staff, but our associates, our drivers, our, our school leaders, our administrators. And, and so that we're creating some intentional opportunities for our staff to come together and for us to learn from the experiences so that we can do better. We can be better as an organization, as leaders, so that we can create a more just and equitable and loving environment for all of our staff members. A key team for us that was created in, in response to the anti-racist town halls, and that was definitely a recommendation from the New York City Leadership Academy, was the development of an anti-racist district leadership team. And so we've got several members on that team that represent all positions, many positions across the organization, from many aspects of the organization. And this team has also represented task force teams. So they are part of the larger district anti-racist team that represents, that talks about systemic opportunities for us to change our narrative and to change the experience for our students, staff, and families of our organization so that we are more just and we can to operate and function and, and live out our professed beliefs of becoming an anti-racist organization. But they also work in, in concert with others around task force teams that specifically unpack with department supervisors these findings and, and continue to interrogate and analyze our current systems to see where we need to actually dismantle the entire system, where do we need to make tweaks, where are we actually getting results, and how do we actually double down on those results when we're getting? We've developed an internship process. Again, this is, this is a, a pilot of sorts around creating opportunities for leaders to engage in an internship and then removing barriers for, for leaders to have those experiences prior to getting in the actual job. So we've got a couple of positions that we actually pilot with, both at the principal level and the principal level. And these have been very successful for us and we're looking to double down on these and expand these in future years. When we get to finding number three, there's not consistency across all positions within the district to create a positive, supportive experience for students. What you'll see here is this is, obviously, our entire plan is obviously spearheaded, but finding number three is inundated and perforated with SEL, right? And our Castle work and making sure that we are fully aware and both self-aware and socially aware around the spaces that we occupy, the power that we have and the influence that we have in our decision-making, regardless of the position that we hold in our district. And so our Castle work and our, our partnership with Castle is critical to this particular finding. Of us can, I couldn't, I couldn't have said it better than our, our team that just presented for us, but again, this is, our SEL work is, anti-racism is anchored within that work. And I think, Kelly, you even brought it up actually in the actual SEL presentation, where there is, there's this intersectionality that's taking place in our anti-racist work and our SEL work. And, and you're spot on with that. It is, it's absolutely anchored in that. And that's where, again, that, that integrated services and those integrated models actually come into play for professional learning. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Matt, I just wondered if this might be the best place to sort of insert the work that we've been engaged in, especially this spring with Cabinet and how we envision that moving forward and having the learning cycle check-ins with, you know, within, with goals for each department around SEL and anti-racism. You're on mute, Matt.
Sorry about that. If you could see this slide here, you should see a, a different slide in front of you. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Perfect, so.
Do you want to expand that a little bit, Matt, if you can?
I can certainly do my very best.
Actually, if you can put it in slideshow format, then it'll at least be big enough that we can see.
Well, see, Kelly, there you go, talking technology to me about putting in slideshow. When you got multiple screens up, it just, it jumped to a screen. And that's what I'm looking to do here. Let me see if I can move that. Well, I'll tell you what, I'm going to see if I can blow that up for you right there because I've got three screens going and it moved to an entirely different screen. Matter of fact, I have three screens and I think I went to screen four.
That helps, that helps.
So there you go. So what Tom is referencing is, again, part of the, the systemic, strategic, and sustainable efforts so that, that we're creating at the Cabinet level whereby all departments are engaging in goal-setting and prioritization, utilizing, if you look at the yellow, the yellow represents our community voice and it represents the collaborative problem-solving process that we engaged with our community in, back in 2019 and the findings that came from that, as well as 2020 in our anti-racist town hall meetings. And within that yellow, sort of all-encompassing aspect of a diagram, of the visual, that's again, what, what our, what our community is saying they need from us. That we need you to be anti-racist, we need you to be strategic and not a moment in time and, and reactive. We need you to be sustainable in your efforts. And so utilizing our, our findings and utilizing the community voice and that of our students and our staff and our families and recognizing that as a department of five, what would typically be five siloed departments that are all functioning for the best of students and staff and families, hasn't, hasn't worked for us in, in years past. And what we've got to do is actually begin to braid and filter and strategically design our departmental goals to be interconnected and interdependent from one another, representative of what our community has asked us to be and how to be, and pass those through our, our levers document, right? And our, our, the findings that we've discovered that are research-based so that we can become a, a fully operating system that is anti-racist and that will achieve board goals. And so what this requires is that we engage in some very specific and intentional time and space to braid and create goals that are interdependent on one another, that are representative of the findings, and that have an X to Y value so that, what you're fully aware of and, and familiar with in terms of those smart goals, that there will be a specific action and actions lifted up and that represent an X to Y value by Z, Z being, of course, our, our timeline for meeting our board goals, that creates a, a strategic plan and an operating system whereby we're all working in tandem and in unison and for one another and with one another to meet our board goals and to be the people that our students and our families and our staff have asked us to be. So this is just a visual, just to represent that work and that sustainability of that work.
Yeah, and Matt, I would just add, add to that, that also accountable to one another at the Cabinet level.
Absolutely. And again, and, and in addition to that, accountable to one another and accountable to our students and our families. And again, that, that yellow is, is not insignificant. It is representative of our community voice and that of our students and staff and families. I'm going to find now that other document. There it is. Some of the things you've already heard tonight. We've made some intentional efforts to increase integrated services positions, counselors, social workers, psychologists, and community school coordinators. Again, building the capacity of our staff around the SEL work so that we can support the adult, again, self-management, social management, and social awareness. And of course, our own, our own individual growth to become anti-racist. So to create that spaces where we can, we can manage the, when the day goes on and not only manage it, but actually see it as a value add so that stuff everyone around us can bring their unique experiences and their unique selves to the table and to the experience. We're also in the development, in the process of creating an ICARE team that would directly support responses from students and staff and family concerns and to engage in a restorative process at a, at a district level, at an aggregate level. And so this is obviously still in process, still in the review, as well as is our, to Tom's point a while ago about the accountability piece, that we've got a development of a performance and review and evaluation system that is student outcome-based and student database and family outcome-based. As you know, that we have a lot of performance and evaluation systems, both here in Des Moines and across the city and locally and across the country, that are based on inputs and, and not always about outcomes and outputs. And so we're looking to revise our performance review and evaluation system that does reflect the expectations and standards that we have for one another, that we have for ourselves, and that specifically our students and families and our community has for us. And of course, in finding number four, again, several recommendations from the New York City Leadership Academy, what you see is representation of some inputs around some structural changes and some systemic adaptations to our operating systems in DMPS. One of them is, is the revising and updating of our DMPS equity plan that was developed back in 2017. While that served DMPS well and there was a lot of time and energy and explicit support in that particular plan, it's, it got us to where we were and not where we need to be. And so we needed to continue to, to move the needle for our students and our families. And so there is some potential efforts to revise and update that equity plan to be reflective of today and where we need to be tomorrow. We've also, of course, you got our universal foundational levers identified there. No need, we talked about that a lot and so no need to hit on that again. And I think we're all familiar with the removal of the SRO program as a structural change as a result of our findings. One of the other recommendations obviously was for us to get a universal dual translation platform. At the time, we had already begun with School Connects as our, as our partner in this work. And this allowed us to, I guess, focus our resources in the deployment of a universal platform in School Connect so that it's, it's ubiquitous across our schools, so that our families are not dancing from one platform of communication to another with really good intentions. And again, so we've done a lot of things with really good intentions, but we're looking for outcomes and results moving forward. And I believe that's, that's all of the, of the examples that we used. Peter and Tim, I'll stop talking right now if you want to lift anything up that I may have missed for the board or for Dr. Ahar. And hearing nothing, I knocked it out of the park.
All right, thanks, Matt. Yeah, Peter, Tim, if you, if either of you want to add something or Dr. Jacques or anyone else. I would just ask the board, you know, this was a, I just wanted to give a, a bit of an update on what we've been up to since, since we really initiated this work about a year ago, actually, right about a year ago, and confirm that we're on the right track and this is work that the board supports or if we should be headed in a different direction.
I will speak. Matt, could you send me that, what you showed us? I would like to see it. I believe I'll have more questions after I can just see the document that you shared with us. If there's anyone else that wants that document, please. the document that you shared with us. Um, if there's anyone else that wants that document, please let me know so that I could get it to you. Um, oh, okay. Uh, can you hear me? Okay, all right. Um, but Dr. Aart speaking personally and I, and I, the board could chime in too, but I think that this is the right work that we're doing. I think that this is the work that we that we know that is needed to taking this approach to becoming, um, an anti-racist system that one, we've recognized the problem that we've had as a district, which is always the right direction to move into. And then also making strides to, um, figure out how we change that. I believe that the areas that you're focusing on and you're uplifting, I know for me personally have been areas of concern and I think that we're heading in the right direction as far as looking at curriculum. And especially having students be at the table for that to be able to talk about what they want to see in the classrooms and also having curriculum that's representative of themselves. Also looking at how we retain, hire and recruit, um, more staff of colors. We know that we have a, a district that is majority student of color, but we don't have staff that look like them. And so, um, for me, I believe this is the right work. I know that the board has been looking at, um, in some of the guardrail discussions that we've had as, um, creating this as a policy and no, Matt, I've shared that with you as well. Uh, we want to be able to support that work. I think, uh, having a policy uh, to do that, um, will also give guidance to the district. But I do believe that this is the right work and I know we could probably counter it, but I still believe this is the direction that the district should be going in. And I'd leave it open for anyone else. Um, any of my board colleagues to chime in on that.
I just, um, I have a question, but Kelly, I know you got to get out of here. Did you have anything you wanted to chip in or you left?
Thank you, Rob. Um, no, I would agree with, with Duana or with, um, our board chair that this is work that I think we have been expecting and have been waiting for. And I know I'm excited to embrace this and really, um, dive into the work. I know just a quick question that I had is, as we were talking about professional development and, um, don't know that I wrote it down, but I think Tom, maybe you had even referenced it, or maybe it was Matt around, um, there are district equity teams and there's some what appears to be some conversations in building. Now, it's my understanding that it's not required or mandatory for staff. Is that correct? It's volunteer-based?
For, for what specifically are you talking about?
Well, I don't know if it was the equity teams, but I thought there was, um, there are some conversations that happen within buildings as I've talked to some staff that are specific around the anti-racist work, but it's not a mandatory conversation for all staff to come and engage in. And it, it's really on comfortability level. Um, so it's like we're starting to bridge it, but we're not having conversations with necessarily all staff around the anti-racist work. And so I'm curious, what is the plan to really embrace and engage all staff in this work?
Well, that's part of what, um, we, I'm trying to take the temperature on, um, tonight to make sure that this is work that the board supports. It's, um, the anti-racism work specifically. Isn't referenced anywhere in policy. It's certainly something that we think is the right, you know, the right direction to head. And we've had a, a full plate, um, with, especially with our SEL work going on right now. So this is certainly a direction we would like to go in and, and integrate it, um, more comprehensively. You know, with all staff. Um, we're certainly doing that by department and you'll see some of that next year kind of regardless of, of what happens tonight. But, um, if, 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 if this is work that's roundly supported by the board, we'll, we'll go after it harder and deeper.
Okay. And I know that as part of that could come in conversation with what we're talking about with our governance committee and looking at guardrails um, as well. And just kind of a, a final question before I have to hop off and I will dial in on my phone as I'm, I'm heading out too. But, um, if you were to ask our students if, what changes they maybe have noticed, how do you think they may answer that question?
I can jump in.
I think, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I was going to offer student voice. Um, the, the inclusion of student voice, um, and the representation of students, not only in our curriculum, but in the, the spaces around, um, the development, which is again, all student-led around our, um, equity and racial justice teams, um, at our secondary schools. Um, I, I would, I would throw out that the, the, the experience of students of feeling included in the decision-making and the design process of how they learn and, and what that learning experience looks like and feels like. Um, is definitely represented in our schools and, and, and the opportunity still is there to grow that capacity to include student voice and family voice and staff voice. Um, but I think we're, we're much further down the road than we've ever been in that regard.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say too. I don't know if you would hear it to a student, but certainly there's way more opportunity for students to be meaningfully engaged in things that will directly impact their experience at school and even in, in the, in specific classrooms. Um, we, we need to continue to broaden that so more students are at the table having those discussions. But we're at a, I would agree with Matt that we're at a, a much more elevated place than we've been ever, um, in that regard. Um, but something that we always need to continue to build on.
And Tom, I, I would add to that, that the, our secondary teams are going to be hosting a summit, uh, where they have written a grant uh, through the, with the United Way to host a, um, a summit this summer to begin to build capacity and sustainability of that student leadership and student voice, uh, around the work of anti-racism and getting more folks, more young people involved, uh, in the process. So that's how part of the work is also ongoing.
Thanks for that, Mr. LaBlanc.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to hop off and I'll try and join on my phone.
My, um, uh, two things. One, not for immediate follow-up, but I'd love to know a little bit more about the development of Chicano Studies and Latinx Studies. Uh, separate courses and kind of what's going to be covered in those. Uh, but then for tonight, what I'm just curious about is, I want to raise up is when you, when you cut to the second key, I can't remember what the term, the, the terminology in the report was, but the second kind of key takeaway or finding from the, from the, uh, town halls this summer seemed to be that, um, focused around hiring and staff. And the first, the, the section on the very left side was, was basically what folks said. Um, and it, and it, and, and that, the, the top point on that one, if I recall, basically said, listen, you need to make a clear statement to the community that this is a priority, that we're trying to hire a diverse team of educators. And then you get over to the right side and it's, you know, you have an internal team that's working with HR. Um, and you're, and you're developing affinity groups, which are both, I think, fine steps forward, but both very internal facing. And so somewhere along the lines, then either that desire, that, 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 really that desire from the community to for a clear statement that this is a priority and this is a goal that we're working towards. Either just wasn't addressed in the action steps or it was lost along the way. And I think that that being more explicit about this work and being explicit to folks that aren't within this, this network of Des Moines Public Schools is, I think, really helpful in, um, creating, uh, uh, more buy-in in, but then also really setting expectations appropriately high. If we say we're doing it broadly and publicly, then we really have to follow through and get it done.
You know, I'd like to follow on with what, um, my colleague, Mr. Barron, just shared. Um, several of us had the opportunity to participate, um, this week in some student presentations. And, um, so many of them focused on, um, staff of color and topics that really, I think, align back to, um, this anti-racist work. And the students were absolutely clear um, and unequivocal about their expectations for what they not only want from us, but what they need from us as students of color. So, um, I think it's really important to sort of match the pace and rigor with which the students have created expectations with the actions that we take, um, as a district. Um, we, we had an opportunity and I, I don't really know anything about the pool of candidates for the most recent principalship, but it would have been okay to take a little bit of time to get someone of color in the pool and to think about how we show up for our students. Um, we cannot miss an opportunity because every time we do, we lose their confidence. And I think that we have to not only be intentional about this, but our pace and our rigor has to mirror the expectations that we're setting by doing this work. And I don't think that I can underscore that anymore than saying, let's get it right. Let's move the needle and let's meet the expectations that we're creating because we can't say one thing and do something different because we'll lose people along the way.
I echoed Duana's comments earlier regarding, um, the board and where we are at with this particular work. Um, we very much support this work. We've written a guardrail and guardrails uh, that will reflect that. And I'm not sure when those will be shared with you, Tom, but you will see that the number one guardrail currently written is regarding our anti-racist work. So, um, if, if it is a question currently, it will no longer be moving forward and in, in very, very soon stride. Um, I would welcome complete transparency around this work. Um, a portion of our website dedicated to it so that our community is aware, this is not just a, you know, this is not just something that's happening in one classroom or one new course that's being offered. This is much bigger than that. And, um, the more engagement and involvement that we have with our community, uh, the more successful we will be. So I would, I would welcome, uh, not only you sharing that, that full list of actions with the board, but also uh, putting them out there on the website for the public to see, uh, our devotion and our commitment to this work. Thank you for what you've done already. Um, it's not easy work and I recognize that, but I completely support it and um, I'm happy to see that we have made action, um, in areas that I was not aware of prior to this presentation. So that's nice to see, but know that we have much more to do and look forward to the continued efforts that we're putting forward.
Yeah, I, I think this is very, very positive work and it's long overdue. So I absolutely think we should, should keep going and taking the, the steps. I mean, these steps and others, of course. I do have two questions though, that, that I've, that, uh, one of you guys can probably cover. Uh, the first is around those courses that are developed. Are those going to be considered like elective courses? Are they, can a kid take that in place of a required history or whatever? Or how, how do they fit into the, the catalog, I guess?
Yeah, at this point, they're, they're electives. Um, however, um, depending on what area, you know, you're in, they're, they, they would, they would fulfill a a graduation requirement as it relates to district requirements for social studies. I don't know if you have more detail, if anybody else wants to fill in more detail on that, but essentially they're, they're not, they, they, none of those courses would be required, but they, but they could meet a, a requirement of graduation, more generic graduation requirement. If that makes sense.
And then, uh, second, I could, uh, the, uh, the internship thing that you guys talked about, I, I believe we started that last year and I think we had, what, two or three people involved in that? Could, could somebody just tell me more about that and give me the details again? Like what, what does this internship mean or what does it do?
Sure, Mr. Cody, I can help with that one, uh, a little bit. Um, it started off as we had, uh, when, when I was set off on this special assignment role, uh, it opened the principalship. And, uh, instead of going through the process, the normal process, um, we created an intern opportunity so that we could broaden the pool of candidates that we, uh, get. Uh, so that we could with intention really think about, uh, what we wanted out of the next principal, uh, at Goodroll Middle School. Uh, and so we were able to create a process where we were able to, uh, go internal, have a, a, a rigorous selection process based off of, uh, information that was provided from each candidate and, and made a selection from there, uh, internally, which was, uh, our AP Carrie Romo. Uh, that again, opened a position, uh, in, at Roosevelt High School for associate principal where we were able to again, uh, place and, uh, open it up as an intern opportunity. Uh, and again, that we were able to not, by not having the licensure be a requirement, uh, but only being a part of a program, uh, as the requirement opened up the pool of candidates that could apply for the position. Uh, which again, gave us a, a more diverse population of folks who, who would actually, uh, qualify for the position. Uh, and so we were able to hire Frank Lee, uh, through that process. Uh, and he is currently an intern going into, he'll be going into his second year of internship in, uh, at Roosevelt next school year. Um, what we've done from there since then is in our most recent, uh, administrative, uh, elementary, uh, associate principal uh, opening, we were able to post that as both an, both an intern and a fully licensed position at the same time. Which again, broadened them, the number, the pool of candidates that could actually apply and qualify, uh, for the position. And so we want to see how we can continue to leverage that role, uh, in ways that allows us to with intention, have more opportunities for folks of color, uh, who might not, not, who might not yet be licensed, uh, but are in the process of becoming licensed.
So then, so specifically with, uh, with Roma moving into the principal intern thing, I mean, she was for all intents and purposes, the principal last year at Goodroll?
She was, uh, the principal and then I would go in and I was supporting and, and working with her in that.
Okay.
As well as Frank Lee over at Roosevelt. I, I met with them both weekly and bi-weekly, uh, depending. I met with Carrie more bi-weekly uh, because she had administrative, uh, experience. And I met with Frank weekly, uh, about his role on top of all of the other supports that any first year associate principal or principal would receive in that, in that position.
Okay. And then, uh, is part of this just to see if a person likes that sort of role? Are they, are they actively getting licensure credits or how, how does that part work?
Yeah. So in the case of Carrie, she was already fully licensed because we cannot place a principal who's not fully licensed in the, in the principalship. But in the case of Frank, he is currently in this position and the hours that he is, he is receiving for the work that he's doing are going, are going towards his, his program, uh, for the internship part of his program that he's currently in.
So to that, to that end, um, Mr. Cody, I, I would offer, um, because I think your question is super, um, unique, um, in the sense that you're making connections around our blue contract, right? And so one of the things that we know about um, the opportunities with our, our university partners is to, um, co-generate experiences for, uh, our staff, both as teachers and as leaders, um, to give them a, um, a unique urban experience where they grow in their self-awareness, they grow in their own individual, uh, desires and, and collective expectations to become an anti-racist. Grow in their equity work. And oftentimes ones, we will hear that, you know, I, I think I know what the job is, but, um, I'll just know it when I do it. Um, uh, you know, part of our systemic work is actually to eliminate that statement for folks. So that they no longer have to say, I'll just, I'll know it when I get there. I'll, I'll know it when I do it. Or, oh, that's when I'll learn the actual job. I'll, I'll listen to the theory here, but actually learn the job when I'm there. Um, we've got to eradicate that statement in DMPS so that folks actually know what the role is and what the expectations are while they're doing the job. And so, um, and that's for their future job, for their career path. And so, um, we, we don't, um, want folks stepping into positions feeling like they have a huge learning curve and then we'll get to the work. Um, we need to deal with the learning curve while they're in their current role so that they're oriented towards their future and career path, uh, in DMPS moving forward.
Okay. And you said the, this guy at Roosevelt's in his second year. Is there, I mean, is this time bound? Is there a certain expectation, I'll do a couple of years as an intern or, or is that just an option?
Yep. He's going into his second year due to he, he's in the, he'll be finishing his second year of his programming. Uh, and so. Uh, and so he's going to finish out his two-year term as an intern and then we, we move forward from there.
Okay. And I guess my last question then is, how, how many of these interns are we expecting to have next year?
We are still in the planning process of that. Um, and again, allocating resources and deploying, uh, resources accordingly.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I just think this is a fantastic idea and there really is a big barricade between being a teacher and becoming an administrator. And I know tons and tons of people that have the licensure, but these spots just never open. So it's exceptionally competitive to begin with. And that's another one of these barricades, right? So giving more people the opportunity is, is exactly right, I think. I mean, I could be entirely wrong, but I don't think I am.
But you're also hitting on this idea of equity access, of, of access is often attributed to students. We're also talking about equity of access for adults. Right? The adults in our system also need equitable access to experiences and careers and, um, future pathways.
Yeah, another, another note I would make on this count is that, um, uh, part of the, uh, the, the original creation of the school improvement leader position, which we no longer have because we, we, we re-engineered, um, building leadership positions a couple of years ago, specifically with equity in mind, but the, the school improvement leader position was originally intended to be sort of a, uh, as I described it when I was trying to sell it to central administration at the time, was a greenhouse for, um, for principals, you know, um, giving them as many experiences similar to what they'll experience as a principal, but essentially on a smaller scale and working within a team. What, what we learned over time was that, that, that we had, um, SILs who were winning out principalships, um, a, at a pace faster than sitting vice principals were. Um, and so we've, we've kind of taken the best of both worlds, re, re-engineered the position, which is, we're now finished our second full year with that, but, and, and we don't have, I don't think we have complete numbers yet on hiring, but our AP positions are, are almost certainly, you know, in, in most, in most circumstances, going to be the pool of folks who are most competitive for our principal positions. And the AP hiring that we've done this year, um, we, we've had quite good success. We don't have the final numbers yet because I think, I think we still have um, at least one more hire to make, but, um, we are advancing the, the percentage of hires of color in that group, um, pretty significantly. Um, which will, which will, um, be a, a, a much quicker route to, to having that same, that same thing happen at the principal level.
Is there conversation around holding employees both at those leadership levels, um, as well throughout the organization, holding them accountable for this anti-racist work? How are we identifying um, particular outcomes that they are responsible for when around not only this SEL work, it's very much embedded, but, um, the anti-racist work as well?
Yeah, we're, we're, we are. We're actually, um, we're currently, aside from the, the reporting out that, that, uh, the different departments need to do at the cabinet level on measurables, um, as Matt had referenced and it wasn't real clear because there was so much information in such a short period of time, but we are, we are, we're redeveloping our, our evaluation instruments, um, such that our anti-racism, um, expectations are embedded in the evaluation process.
Yeah, Tom, and I'll, and I'll just add to that too. That's exactly where I was gonna go. And, and in addition to that, um, those aspects being embedded, it's also a matter of whose, whose voice or feedback is privileged in those, in those performance reviews. And so connecting to what Matt said earlier about student voice and great progress there, um, we will have student voice, parent voice, teacher voice, um, embedded in the, in the data around admin performance review as well.
And will that be implemented? Is that a sprint for the 21, 22 school year?
Yes, ma'am.
That's the goal, yeah.
What additional sprints are, are on board for things that will be priorities on August 25th? This is a long list of to-dos. Um, and I know we just got a high-level overview, but what are, what are the sprints right now?
Yeah, I would lift up one more, if I might. Um, connected to, you all are familiar with, with the Blue program and, and its significant investment in a culture of responsive, um, teaching. And one of the, one of the changes in terms of a sprint that starts here right away in the fall is we have modified that program, the mentoring and induction part of it specifically, so that the, the rich and robust and culturally relevant, um, aspect of mentoring and induction for those first two years that occurred with new staff who chose Blue, starting next, um, fall will be the same experience that every single employee has. So there won't be essentially two tracks. You can opt into to a culturally relevant induction experience or not. Um, it will be, um, all-in on, on that as, as part of the, the Blue contract changes, which will, um, we're very excited about.
The other thing, um, I think maybe to help answer your question, Kim, and was actually, um, sort of lifted up as a question and, um, from Rob and both Terry around the public-facing nature of our work, right? And, and making sure that as we're co-generating, designing actions and outputs and outcomes, that we also have a very public-facing, um, scorecard where the accountability is not just the accountability we feel to ourselves and one another, but we actually feel it in, in our engage in that accountability, um, process with our community.
Is there anything else before we wrap up this discussion? But then I also think kind of it's a great segue to go into our guardrails discussion too, which I'll just be giving a update on that. Is there anything else, any questions that anyone had before I give an update on our guardrails? Okay, hearing none. Um, we are currently working right now as a board to, um, look at our guardrails. We have received feedback from the board and, um, the Student Outcomes Focus Governance, uh, Committee, which consists of myself, Ms. Marterano and Ms. Sawyer. We've gone through and taken that feedback and we have, um, retweeted some of the language a little bit. The next steps for that will be, um, showing that to, uh, Dr. Ahart tomorrow. I'll be showing him that. I wanted him to get his eyes on that and then we'll also be sharing that with the board as well. So we, um, are continuing to work on it. Uh, we believe that we've got it at a place where we've taken all of the feedback that we've received and, um, made some of the necessary, uh, language changes. Just also to let you know too, as we are talking about our anti-racist work, one of the guardrails that we do have, as Ms. Marterano has pointed out, is, does have to do with our anti-racist work. And so just to kind of solidify that this is the right work that we're doing, um, we want to make that as one of our guardrails as well. And so we will continue, um, to work with that, but we will start tomorrow by showing that to Dr. Ahart and then, um, him and I will talk about what we believe some of our next steps will be in board. I will be, um, providing that information to you when I give my, uh, update from agenda planning tomorrow. If there is nothing else, I want to be mindful of time as well because I went past the time. It's eight thirty right now. And so thank you all for, for hanging and having what I feel like is much-needed conversation as we continue, uh, to push this district to be better. And so Dr. Ahart, thank you for your work and the team, everyone that's been on the phone with us and, and joining us. Thank you, uh, Peter, Timothy and Matt, along with Dow, if you're still on the line, and, and Jake and, um, Allison. Appreciate all of the work that you are doing and we will end for this evening. Uh, it's eight thirty-one. Thank you all.